Yeah, I have my.
Oh, my God, how wonderful that. There it is. It's very detailed and wow, wow, look at that. She reminds me of another artist that's who is big just. Who will have it.
Just a reminder to, you know, try to, if you're not talking to, uh, keep noise to a minimum and we are talking to be very loud. And hopefully this is our last meeting. All right, that's where we are already. All right, time six o'clock, I'm calling order or regular meeting at the city council, the city of Sunset Valley, Texas for Tuesday, April fourth, twenty twenty-three. And before we introduce comments, just a few notes. We hope as the city administrator has said that we're going to be returning to regular council chambers with our next meeting and also mean um, the committees will be able to return to uh, to the city hall facility. Um, there's been a lot of work that's been done, it's visible in the progress and the fact that we're a local, the art event, public works event there last year. Uh, good stuff in that direction, so appreciate all the staff support getting the building ready. Um, also just wanted to send a thank you to all the staff for the events we've had recently, I think Saturday was a really busy day. Um, but it was really well attended, we had the Governor run some in the morning, we had um, the public work open house concurrent with that a little bit afterwards and then we had the. You know, that weekend as well, and so I think it is a good example of um, community events that that really aid with the community. Um, so really thank you for giving up your lead or Saturday, I think it was a really good opportunity for us to work with staff and, you know, community together, so thank you again. And for that, I'm gonna open up for public comments and there was a vote that we should see this time please to the podium and talk loudly as loud as you can.
Well, listen, that was twenty fifteen, I too want to thank the staff uh, for, and the police department for the marvelous staff that was done. Public Works for the incredible open house events, uh, which was long. Uh, we came in our good friend Dave Lee and it was, uh, it was just delightful to see the children, the people of of War Elder Persuasion and animals and uh, staff dressed up. And just, it was just a really super fun event, uh, we came down here both Saturday and Sunday and um, it was just delightful. On Sunday, we came and worked on the mural and we had, we brought another friend and we had a fabulous time with that. Uh, Arts Commission did a spectacular job, it was, it was very smooth, the artist uh, had a really great system. Uh, the children were really engaged, it was, it was so fun to to watch such a well-expected event. And there were also people from the Arts Commission there photo documenting uh, and facilitating and it was just a lot of work. Guys, they want all that work this weekend to go uh, under march because it was, it was clearly very labor intensive for staff committees. And it was incredibly successful, I don't know when we have more fun than we do, thank you.
Thank you. You're gonna say your comments for later, are you? Uh, anybody else who's speaking at the back? Right, we'll move on to general report, just staff reports, beginning with the administration report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and I will echo uh, Senator Gonzalez and the mayor and just want to thank all the staff and all of the resident volunteers that were involved uh, in the events over the weekend, it was a really great time. I attended uh, you know, the, I got to see the mural as it progressed Friday, Saturday, Sunday, so I, it was really cool to see like all the work that went into it. So that was a really, really great idea of the Arts Commission, and I'm really glad we did it and I can't wait for it to be making out on the building. And the open house was great, I guess that was our first open house since.
No, we haven't, I'm not sure.
Okay, uh, but it was uh, it was really well attended, the Governor of Congress created to, a big shout out to the Police Department, uh, to Officer Brownlow, to Danielle, um, and to Sergeant Eller, who was the uh, so. Uh, so it was a lot of fun, uh, so for the administration report, uh, just wanted to highlight a few things, comprehensive land revisions. Uh, our next meeting will be the end of this month, uh, that's a joint meeting with zoning and any environmental staff is, we have one final section uh, to go through. Just so we have our staff edits that we will then send to zoning commission and P and E, which gives them a few weeks to look at it. So we'll have a joint meeting at the end of April and then a Saturday workshop, May thirteenth, and then hopefully by that point we'll be ready to send the document to council where we can have public hearings and then get it adopted and that's the goal is, you know, summer, mid, midsummer. I think it would be good to get that adopted before we start the uh, budget process, so that is our goal. Uh, we're continuing to work with Tyler Technologies and and getting uh, council's questions answered and also trying to get uh, a more firm estimate on what the cost of implementation will be before we bring that back to council for the ERP uh, software. Uh, as the mayor said, we hope to be back uh, to public meetings uh, in city hall on uh, for the next council meeting in April eighteen. And we also hope to have uh, administrative staff that are moving to city hall uh, in by the first week of May. So we're excited for that, upcoming events, uh, there's an open house uh, next week for Upper Vancouver Creek, that's Tuesday, the eleventh, six thirty.
Yes.
To eight thirty and we hope to have that at city hall. Um, that's gonna be more about, I guess, pitching the men's uh, schematic design for the, for the park. Uh, uh, April twenty-third, which is Sunday, is Spring Fling, a Doc's Backyard. We're grateful to Charles, uh, knowing it, we're hosting it again, and then of course the big event uh, is Saturday, April twenty-ninth. Last day of Saturday of this month will be Art Fest, it'll be the fifteenth Art Fest. So we hope that everyone uh, comes out and enjoys and we need residents to uh, sign up to volunteer. So there will be information in this month's newsletter, which publishes Friday, or there's an online uh, sign up. Uh, there's a way to sign up or spaces online, every sign up. Uh, there's a joint CED and PD committee meeting tomorrow, we're actually gonna have representatives from all three of the shopping centers attending. We're gonna discuss plans for Upper Vancouver Creek, we've also reached out to, you know, business owners that, that will be stakeholders like Docs, well, that'll end. Uh, the Brody Events Center, so we hope they're able to attend as well, um, and we also might be discussing with the businesses, some of the things we're discussing tonight. Water conservation programs and better life. Uh, so that's tomorrow. Uh, just want to point out, there's a joint uh, workshop with the Budget and Finance Committee scheduled for their regular meeting this month. So hopefully council can attend that and prior to that, so at the next council meeting, um, kind of wanted to do a poll, are y'all able to do a work session? And would you be able to start at four thirty? Because we're gonna have a draft budget presentation, similar to what we did last year. So that will be the eighteen, eighteen, we'd want to try to do a work session. So next meeting, the eighteen, and you know, normally we start our work sessions at five, but well, you know, this is presenting the draft budget for this year, two, three, four, so if you're available, start at four thirty, but now we'll just, we'll just start at five. So you can, you can, I'll send a reminder, you know, that when we start that workshop, but also just wanted council to be aware that we are planning to meet, have a joint meeting with the Budget Finance Committee on April twenty-seventh, that's a Thursday.
It's like what we did last year, we'll present the first hour, then hand it over to the Budget Finance for their, for their.
Correct, yeah, we will, we will, y'all will have to. And that's, oh, one more thing that I guess, probably the first time being shown, so again, I'm just wanting to follow our policy, so there are some budget adjustments that don't need uh, you know, council approval or oversight, uh, if it's, if it's, you know, under a certain amount, the mayor can approve. And again, these are interdepartmental budget adjustments, so within the same department, so this is the first one of the year that the mayor's approved. And according to our financial policy, they need to be reported to council, so this was the uh, first one the mayor had to approve and then this was the the one that I approved. So I'll be having to answer any questions about anything in that.
That's all any questions for the city official? All right, moving on to public works.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and I'm just gonna report on a few things here, so uh, since we last met, Striking on Joan, Sunflower has been completed, and those of you who came on Sunday, the Saturday, to look at us, may have noticed that the usual panel have been involved inside city hall and in the chambers, they actually do a great job of helping mitigate the noise and sound. Uh, we've removed one homeless camp over near the private ground at Trail Entrance, and we're gonna be doing another kind of, you know, degree removal, that kind of storage area we talked about last time this week, um, spring cleaning month is completed, so we did a lot of extra pickups this last month, so those have all been done. And the other thing I want to talk about a little bit is regarding the pilot crowd trail, so they, um, it's kind of in the bottom of the public work report. The city boss will be finished with the trail, kind of fortune of the project this month sometime, it'll be very soon, maybe if you guys drive by on, um, you don't see as much from people whole part, but if you drive by uh, a mopac, a garbage area, you can see where there's a lot of construction happening there. Um, because the last core part that they will do for this trail is lay down the granite gravel, stabilized granite gravel, the last they did to the tunnel for they are basically contracted on the way out, they're gonna put that down, and so that'll be done with that. And so, um, as far as the original proof of that project, the footprint for the trail head is also approved and where the trail is, we go over here at, um, we go over there. And Hill County Conservancy, but Hill County Conservancy will be building that trail, so they're kind of working through the final pieces of that. Um, one of the questions they asked was that, you know, the original footprint denied for the restroom. So they're asking, well, what is their possibility of building the restroom? And so that brings a lot of questions, first of all, there's no nearby ways for our line, uh, and so they, they're kind of working through that. So I think what we would uh, see is this could come back, you know, as a future agenda item, they kind of get that from what, you know, what can be done, if these things are possible, what the kind of just general feeling is for having a restroom. Also, we have to talk about is HCC gonna be taking over maintenance and security of that restroom and things like, but there are a lot of things to be considered with that, I think, um, it's a question that just needs to be stepped and researched a little bit more, because we don't, there's not a good option for a major line, noise fertilizer very far away. And so we have to just look and see if even the idea of composting toilets or something like that are even a possibility? And what those things, what, what Hill County Conservancy be willing to do with that, so. Um, and I do have to answer any questions, oh, the last thing I need to also say is, um, we do have the Upper Vancouver Creek meeting on the eleventh, but on the twelfth is the combined CIP project meeting, we'll also be doing that hopefully in city hall. Um, so that will be kind of any resident, anybody who has any questions about the projects that will be happening on Mono and Sunset Trail and Jones Road and kind of two ninety, they keep asking questions, and we kind of think that we are meeting with the contractor this week to kind of get that moving in the right direction, so just any questions, anybody have?
Sure, uh, the, the panels in city hall are amazing and you can really tell just walking back and forth.
Through the rooms?
Yeah, so I think the next thing we do is put those panels, they didn't watch.
No, I agree.
I, I was shocked, uh, also the blurry one, they first put it down, it was like a little squishy and then I started to barge without how it eventually like settles down, it, it just didn't feel very like. In the beginning it did, now it feels.
Yeah, it feels good, okay, yeah, it was subtle too, they got, I think it all in as well.
It, it was, it was really great, um, the striking looks great, I was running down this way and it's just, everything is popping, but I, I don't know if it just been one time like the day or two before that, and then, you know, pull on the robots and also there's none. So it's like, what if this is my mind, uh, so we've done that, uh, who do we use for the, so we have like the native plant sale. What do we use for that?
Native Texas, I'm sure.
They have this, wow, wait, and we use them with all years in a row?
I've been here, we use.
I, I think we should maybe choose someone, they never have anything.
Well, a lot of the problem is, is that we'll put out a, a, like list basically, and then by the time we get the order, if we give everybody, if we show them a good order, based on that, I think, and so Matt and I were talking, and it is a kind of work to put that together, make it all work. So we talked about that, instead of doing the, like we do, where people order to be picked up, if we do more of the native plant rebate program, that people get, go buy their own plants and have their land in, and to be rebated, that will be everything so much easier.
I think that's a great idea. Yeah, apparently people have been doing it, I was buying a part of Wilson, knows a lot about this thing, you know, because we're buying it, paying sales side and then we're reselling it.
Yeah.
It's not, and it all, it's kind of an accounting nightmare, it's administrative nightmare, and then it's a logistical nightmare, because then we, you know, we shouldn't, the city shouldn't be necessarily the middle man trying to go out and buy something and then just sell it.
Yeah, so I think we're looking, trying to switch that and evolve to a native plant rebate program, I think it will be a much better option than what we are doing, it's just so much easier, saves so much of time, I mean, and, and just security, I mean, of the plant's law, it's your job.
Where, like, they didn't, they paid for it, then we had to do a rematch.
Yeah, and it's just the whole thing that they can have in work.
I feel like we, well, it was all, I feel like she showed up and just said, I, I took these four because the other ones that I had were on, but they also didn't have anything.
They did not, so the only tree they had was this, okay, so we, when we do the plants, so we only do thirty gallons less because people have to be able to move the tree. And so the only tree they had, a handful of thirty gallons either less, was a, of a shade tree, now they had some that are impossible or things like that. Well, the minds of the decipher, and we didn't even offer that because every time we plant, there is die, so we're like, yeah, we're not even for that tree.
Remake program, I think it's awesome.
I think, yeah, we'll, we'll put that together, we're discussing planning environmental on Thursday, and that's one of the things that would be like, you know, what people are shaving is like a dollar or two on small plants and then, you know, maybe a little bit more on the bigger plant and just do a native plant rebate program. It'll be so much better.
Would you just have like a list of food plants?
Yeah, we have a native and adaptive list that is on city office and has a big huge list with everything. And also include the variety, so if somebody says, I got salvia, then I got a salvia, the sort of precious, you know, that, but they're pretty adapted, all salvias are. We probably include these salvia as we, we can do it that way, so I think we can come up with a really easy list and people can go out and buy them. Um, I know that like, out the door, like great outdoor, you can come up with places that have great selection, but if they go to the HEB nursery, they have really good use selection. They have really, really good, great fun to do, so.
Speaking of price book, uh, Tammy West, who's been my neighbor, she suggested kind of tree books, which is free tree, I, I sat down in a cupboard and just never heard anything back, and then all of a sudden in my driveway were two trees.
Yeah.
A tree then, and so that's planted and the other one is a hologram, so supersites, they made anything, they just showed them what, sixty bucks, but.
Yeah, so people can open up the valley, a much better option going forward, that would, I almost say.
I just want to mention, besides the incredible job that public work staff did setting up for all the multiple events that went on this last weekend. Um, I was at the weekend for, um, unloaded all of the pods and were able to get all of the arts commissions done back in storage in time for us to do Art Fest, so thank you, thank you, thank you, you guys are amazing.
Thank you.
I had my question in terms of the electrical that's for our, that, what's the other page on that? Contact the Austin, I've been trying to plug them every day about this, and they're like, yeah, we're, they're trying to give you the right people to work with, then emails and hopefully, but it not end back in plan, Jerry had, Jerry had an end with the person that just resigned.
Maybe he has the.
And using the generator in, Tom Reed's, that, any panels, aren't they rebell, it's just off energy coming in, so you have a lot better.
Great, thank you for that, keep it to me, just to, appreciate that. Um, and then just in the note, we did have one public comment and it'll go about the, the, uh, by my trail and the idea of putting uh, restrooms or facilities there, uh, just to make it clear, this is something they approached of, but it's not putting the city as, you know, initiated, we like, we're doing our due diligence to, you know, coming back and say, if they need to do this, of course they had to come back with a new site plan to get it approved. So it would be something that we could administratively, you know, do, we had to come back to council, it'll, you know, be something that, like staff said, they're gonna do some investigation, see if it is even feasible. There, we've done a little bit of investigation, I think, you know, in our code, there's something that explicitly says you can't have a composting toilet or something like that, so that may be something that we want to also look at as far as like changes to our code, if we want specifically saying, here's what the rules are about, you know, composting toilets versus not, et cetera. So it'll come back, and I don't wanna, you know, say, you know, get the residents thinking that we're moving ahead with something, we're, we're responding to a request from this particular entity, so. And.
But with the, I forgot to say, it's how professional the public work setup looked with all the new tablecloths, really made a difference, it just really.
Any else for public works? We got public savings.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council, um, the city continues to be impacted by the um, large illegal campsite behind the specs. That's why, I don't know if people have noticed, but even an increase number of people paying for them on street corners, and since they're down. Um, that's because it's a new breed, people that are there, um, we're targeting, targeting them to see them with, I don't know, it's, it's happening more and more. Um, just look at the block, it's not, popcorn, they don't, and they're losing some of those people, of course, not everyone. You know, and there's gonna be, most of them will be, that depends from all the show on the center, so when they do something now, you, it's not just a ticket, they go to show for a trip, ask them to do something like that, but it is a noticed problem. I'm on the first, can you do segment on that, camp and the problems it's causing, I'll, I'll email, you know, segment, they did a pretty good segment on problems it's causing, the stores and that, and shop, and it's in fact with our city as well. Um, I don't know, they're been working on her kids' summer crime, you can, you can see, I'm a little bit scared, I'm not because of the number of kids, I was, I was really scared last. See, I didn't show, I didn't, it was, yes. We're gonna have to tweak that on with the Justin K, you know, for next year's schedule, one of you, we're gonna be playing events, we ran on.
Matt interrupted the.
I'm gonna say, you know, for, see, you say, just see, I think that was, everyone, did a very, you know, probably, first plan is John, put that together, so, I mean, even though you're on one, I was, uh, which is trying to imagine, waiting, I had a vision, a bunch of little kids hanging, hanging, living on the wall on the side of the median, I was gonna help with this. See that, that's, that's where I really embrace, so, uh, good things going on.
Yeah, so the, um, Daniel does reach out to the school and so there, there were a lot of Sunset Valley children here, but there was a lot of Sunset Valley Elementary kids there, which I, I really like, it's it, it really builds communities, so that is kind of a, you know, a not to tweet, where it's just like, you know, how much outreach does she do over there? To me, expand the program, you know, don't blow out the budget, but uh, to have them involved and there's a, there's the Girl Scout troop that's basically based around that school. Uh, so, and I reached out, that's Julie Kussner, who's the, the, um, so we do with Daniel, just kind of work on expectations there, uh, I mean, I, I would say still reach out to, to the school. Uh, I mean, so, yeah, because we need some future police officers on the phone there.
Yeah, the, apparently the system is that they have these Friday folders, so the, the smoke was having about, and the bureau acquired it into their Friday folders, and I was talking to Catherine, she said that several of them appreciated, because I guess the kids take those home and then, you know, it's like a physical, I think that's all a lot of, I don't know.
And but also the, uh, Rallo and I are gonna give up on kind of helicopter drop eggs from so, maybe, maybe next year, they actually did it in but it's Cedar Park, they, they drive, it's my hometown.
Hey, Dan probably has one.
You have, you don't want the, uh, the ERP and.
Yeah.
Um, any other questions for public station? Uh, one, one of them reminded me, the summer duty program, what, when does that start, because I, I did not realize this, but my oldest is, will be eligible. Those are fourteen, then maybe, so I didn't realize that that's the age to start, but it's not like.
It's for fourteen to seventeen year olds with the, we call it team part of the program, and then anybody, usually college state students, eighteen and above, or two teachers graduate, eighteen and above, can be interns, and it will start probably, depending on how cool in the fall, the first week of June usually is when it will start. Now, prior to starting, all we did, we kind of do like a, on an interview, but it's really, you have to sit down with them, your parents, to kind of go, well, what, what the program is about, and, you know, so the stage, your, like, some expectations are, and you know, things like, you know, get your clothes to a shoe, and we have to, you know, teach them, and make sure they practice. It's different working outside than it is just sitting in a classroom, things like that, um, so if you have kids who are in those ages, or there's some kids you know, you know, somewhere kind of positioned to work on, they have plenty of openings for kids to get work and just you can send in a regularship to the valley application and we'll then contact you and set up, like you said, that onboarding interview, as you can call it, to begin with, so. We started to.
Thank you. Any other questions for the staff report? All right, moving on to general report, council consideration of agenda items for, for consent, you're in motion for.
I vote to approve of consent agenda number five, number six, number seven, number eight, number nine, number ten, and number eleven.
Question? Five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, is anyone calling? Ten, eleven, maybe else?
I just have a question on number nine.
Uh, is there second to your number, number five, six, seven, eight, eleven, I'm sorry? All those, they were stated, all those, and all right, we've heard that consent, um, your turn, group of the minutes for the March twenty twenty-three regular meeting and work that. Uh, number six, approval of amendments to financial policies, provide a budget planning advancement, two oh nine, per disorder of seizures, and three oh one, cost payable, that are recommended by the finance committee. Number seven, a group of work that submitting to the sphere twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budgets, budget amendment or five, for the city facility project closeout, as recommended by the budget finance committee. And number nine, approval, I'm sorry, number eight, approval of the peace departments, here's a small rule to try, body worn, and a program grant of ten thousand seven hundred, and approval of the city's ten thousand seven hundred grand match. And I remember eleven, approval of the temporary use permit for subject locations, taking that for one day, record photo shoot at thirty-two, restrive, and park for vehicles alongside east side. I counsel that six is due dinner number nine, um, this is approvals, and that, this is approvals, acting approval of a vice member, member, and the mobile understanding of the merit to youth works, Texas consular board, perform a dedication removal, while the car and gate, red, private, and property projects and disapplication within the streets of value. And that's for many, is you have the right to this one.
Uh, just real quick question on the herbicide gene, what do they do? They get kind of what speeches we're targeting, um, so generally, um, most of the time when we use herbicide, it's going down this, but we're using it on, so I'm not sure exactly the one they're using now, but it is a, they. But it is a, they were really kind of heated on, it's not a kind of a chemist first, but I don't think they use rather than more. Oddly enough, it's not the Texas states are discussed, our team for creatures around here as well, so.
That was my question.
Uh do you wanna go to anybody?
So we want you to approve, I am number nine. Through a memory and a little understanding with American youth works.
There's a second question. It's already up. Further discussion on the side? All those favors say aye.
Aye.
All of us say aye. Motion passed. And I remember ten, this is the word of the bid. To serve pro for city hall kitchen renovations and are not optics, he forty one thousand nine hundred nine one dollars.
Sure, so uh it, it wasn't part of the postage and I forget when you sent it, but you sent. A few documents that were. Hey, these are the ideas of, of the, so uh. The first one I have a question about is the refrigerator, i- in the agenda item, it says refrigerator freezer. Is. I'm just, I'm gonna pull up all of them, okay. Okay, that is only refrigerator, that's right, is that your refrigerator, so there is no freezer here. Uh.
I, I believe that was supposed to be inside by side.
It is, oh, okay. I, I want, I did a search on. Online, I gave all that home people that exact one, it is only a refrigerator, so.
Well, we'll make sure that it's refrigerator, they were, they, they said as long as it's within the same price range that they're wanting to do something that they'll be like. This will be my, so we'll make sure we prefer freezer. Yeah, it needs to be a refrigerator.
And every time that you prefer it, you're gonna keep them, you know, per freezer combo.
The um second point is. These items are, including two thousand dollars in tax. Were exactly.
Should be in, and I've brought up to some before, so. Some of the stuff that just have their systems, all the popular things, sure, so then they go back and like clean it up or whatever.
It, it does become part of the, not to exceed, and so. And so it would be, I had to look this up, uh which is origins and profit, right? So uh their business is going sixty three hundred dollars in origin, okay, whatever. Uh specifically with twelve hundred dollars on that refrigerator. Which is. Too, I guess, plenty. And, hey, well, I. I, I think they don't, they don't.
Set engine setup.
Yeah. Okay, and then. And then that item. And I just want to make sure that that item did not actually have a freezer in it. To search personally, Home Depot, yeah, you love Home Depot. And it's thirty six hundred dollars and very, it is. Fifty nine hundred dollars. We get some for like tags and everything else, we can buy literally two of them. Or what that is hospice, which I mean, even for government is a. I wanted one. Yes, so again, they're doing great work, but that, that one, they can take over, it's gonna work as well. Um so I need some advice on how.
I think they, when they sent some of the, I don't look at it, but I think when some of them were sent, they were just like, this is the idea of why it could look like. Not necessarily that. This is the exact one that can change over time, um but I think it was an idea of this, this is what this up was. Or like, you know, we will probably get the taxes.
Yeah.
To that time or anything, in fact, on their, this island.
And I, I know that we, now. Millions of dollars of budget and sometimes we sit here and like. I'm over a thousand bucks here and there, but I don't know, when, when, when that comes in, let's really try to.
Uh I, I will say five thousand dollars for commercial bridge counted about, right?
No, no, my, my residential refrigerator was four thousand dollars. So, you know, it's, I was actually somebody wants to phone people with the same, like thirty six hundred dollars.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Cheaper like that than all of like I've done, so some of the stuff, like, you know, if we paid for it and they just installed it, like. There's different things we can do, like, we can get it for a cheaper price, I mean.
Yeah, wh- once we get in like the, the realm of several thousand dollar, like, like, especially simple people to prepare. So I don't know. Maybe something, uh. Again, one more. Oh, that was it, um. So I guess like having that, that head, that headroom on there on the contritor seat, but like to be real, uh keep our eye on it and.
Was that, I guess, do you wanna ask me first before we get into?
Oh, that's another topic, same.
Yeah, I think you're about to make a motion, so I just wanna make sure that.
So I had the same question about the freezer. There's no, we have ice cream.
Yeah, there are. In the other piece, it says zireng side, so it, it can be a zireng side, it's gonna be a zireng.
So the other question I had, due to the layout of the kitchen.
Yeah.
It's a location of the warming station. It seems odd that it's going to be next to an ice machine.
So we can probably plug that cabinet over to the other side of the warming station, yeah, that should, as long as we're both underneath that side, we should be fine.
And that, yeah, if you could do that, that would be great, that was all I had.
I have never, I wasn't like, I was seven, but I'm never in a kitchen, like actually making food and stuff, so that doesn't mind my service. Like, uh, do ice machines break a lot?
Your ice machine.
I feel like they're always broken at places. So.
Think about she before we used to. If we had regular baking fun. And it was great.
Okay, great, um yeah, I was thinking of it was. It was for cities, great, almost like books, for people. Renting the place and they just gotta go to some active.
Well, I think people will be using it.
Yeah.
I didn't really press block, but.
Oh, no, no, I went up to you, you know, things that you use like. Uh.
You just reminded me, Rob, working in kitchens, so uh we used to have that little. Table in there and, and I was wondering if our, I think it would be better if we had one of those stainless steel work tables.
So.
Or the countertops moving it up, because I've prepped a lot of stuff in there and worked in there and it's.
This right here is a section of, it's almost like countertop and cabinets on wheels. That would be over by the door, you put it over or away by the door, and you can roll it out to the middle of the room and you have a counter.
Okay, um. I just wanna make sure we have.
You'll have, you'll have. Yeah, this will, this will, I always pictured it coming out in the middle of the room, you're prepping stuff, having a middle room kind of space there. But then when you need to just be done, just put it right along with the window and it's all okay.
Okay. Just wanna make sure, we do cater and bring in a lot of stuff.
And we're also expanding. This is the exit, the window between um the council chambers and that and the kitchen. And it's getting an expanded countertop and cabinet. Okay. Thank you.
Uh then, um, I move we award bid. To serve pro for city hall kitchen maintenance and amount not to exceed forty one thousand nine hundred ninety one dollars and thirty nine cents. There's. That's what I'm being a second. Any further discussion on that? And we'll.
Thank you, uh it sounds wonderful all in all, I just talked the last thing and I did have concern just having. In that, if they have some meetings, so we're saying expanding the window, I just wanna make sure that it sounds. From the kitchen, which happened a lot, we go to the kitchen during council meetings, I just wanna make sure we can use the sound of the thing. Yeah, the, the, but the thing still go down there, okay, well, I'm saying, I, I, I'm concerned about that, that's been a factor over the years where someone's in a vision here that they council, yeah, so. It's all.
And when you say expand the window, it's not making the window larger?
The window's not being larger, it's the ca- countertop, like right now it's got a countertop that's like this wide, it's expanding the countertop, I'm sorry, not the window that it's in, it's the counter, oh, it's deeper, it's becoming deeper.
Any further discussion for, for the. All those figures they are.
I.
Always say aye. Uh no, it's to the next uh session, tonight's presentation, I just heard that in house fashion, I've been in there as well. And this is for the residential street message board workers, and so we begin with a staff over to this side. Also, okay, so uh we now not have the, their street message board, street kiosk, Palm Street signs, we'll get. It's, it's mean science, uh no, so the street message board, uh they've been down now for. Well, those. Though that basically, you know, they were old, they were on a flying part, you know, uh. Public works looked at, you know, trying to fix them and they just, they needed to totally rebuild, which the cost was gonna be. For materials, we had type that drew up, you know, specs, it was gonna be like ten thousand dollars of materials plus labor, you know, staff, labor time to prepare. Um in several C D, you know, the committee was in favor of bringing them back. Uh and I believe we made a motion on why there's. Agenda item for discussion here this evening, uh Carolyn found these message boards uh. Uh online and they do have larger sizes, uh Councilman Johnson, he man, see, even through, so that is an eighteen by eighteen inch, that is. Thirty nine, so.
At the visible.
That's the visible portion of sign, so uh and I guess that is a really good discussion point for, for us to have, see, because, you know. What, what are the intentions of these designs, uh I, I believe the intention is. Uh I, I personally don't think that staff should be going out and putting it every time there's any, you know, maybe you have meetings all the time, I think. If we have these message boards, it should be for events like art fest or like the big, we can't be just have. Uh and also they could potentially be useful during, you know, emergency situation or, you know. Uh have a management, boil water, if those city of Austin, uh so they could, they could be helpful. But you know, I would like us to discuss the pros and the cons, uh you know, the cons, if we went with something like this. Is that really gonna be a large enough space to put a printed sign, you know, and then staff has to remember to. You know, it's just another thing on the list for, you know, admin staffs to make sure, oh, we gotta print, you know, sixteen. Posters and then public works text to go out and change, so. Uh. Yeah, and I'm sure we could find other, you know, other prefabricated uh signboards, uh I. I guess, uh as Carolyn and I discuss. This would be, this would be, if we do wanna move forward with purchasing signs, prefabricated signs, this would be a good, you know, summer team project for the. For the technician, for public works of the teams or roster, if we wanted to pursue having the street message board, you can look for other, you know, other options. Uh ordering eight of these, the size uh will be with the shipping, it'd be a round or just something seven thousand dollars, so. I'd be happy to entertain any questions or discussion. That's our recent, that's our first.
So uh has anyone, has any resident mentioned that this is?
The only time I feel like they come up is during C D. And.
Okay.
And C D is, I mean, everyone's, you know, you want this back, you want them back, but.
Um yeah, so I, I, I like it, but I found that uh. If you're driving, you really can't read it and, and it's only the, if you're walking, you, or you stop it.
And, and you can even see like, you know, in this picture.
One looks really small.
Yeah, and then the picture is on a trail, I mean, I think that's really what it's designed, it's designed to be a sign for this, this.
Right, and some of this is, what's the dimension?
The sign is.
They're eighteen by eighteen, but the, the visible face is like thirteen and a half, it's right there.
So if you're in a car and there's, you know, a bit, quite a bit of text, that's not gonna be.
You, you have to do.
So we probably have to, we would have to order larger signs, which would increase. We looked, well, we.
Think about what, who overloads the.
We went up to the next. And so by, again, you know. Are they, are they worth, are they worth it, worth of the initial cost and then the upkeep? And then the staff time to, you know, staff, the resource of the front signs and then to go. Put about you. Of her.
Yeah, and how many people showed up to these because we have. And now we don't have for the last six, how many people and follow off because we don't have. That's pretty well answered. The one that we had in Meadows was so short. Yeah, and that kind of was gonna be, oh yeah, let's do this, but now I'm thinking.
I can see, there could be some benefit to having like this kind of event, you know, another way of operating hours, we, we have, you got feedback and. We've even our, that's a special about how doing outreach to the residents in different ways, right? So we, the newsletter, obviously one, who will like, I contact another one. There could be utility and, and this, and some of this could be also, the message would be prefabricated in a sense, or it would turn out every time we have. We would have to do that, but like, well, others, because we just have a set of signs that we just use. Or maybe there's a way of making artists desk like more energy, or, or a, a theme that just gets updated personally, but the sign itself is static, right, that sort of thing. But it is big expense, you know, and um, you know, I think it's just the value of what, what this provides and the residents expect and. Uh whether you think it's worth it, certainly the stat type of rebuilding signs and the labor costs there. That's a lot compared to just purchasing something that's uh that's meant for this, so. That is right, that's.
So we have the old ones, what size were those, visible size?
They're probably, I mean, you can probably set two pieces of paper next to it, like, kind of like eleven by seven.
It's like ledger, ledger size, so eleven by, you could put it eleven by, that's a question, that's a lot of minds.
Well, because I used to do a, for, for, when we had different events and stuff, you really can't put much on them. You know, and for people to be able to see it when they're driving by, on this, so they would say, and then, so it's like. A little bit of information, is that really gonna make a difference?
And, and for major events, like for the event this weekend, art fest, you know, sprinkling. We do send out posts, we, we have, we do send out posts, and so between that and our digital, with the eye contact and also media, we have a website where we feature that's.
So when we have multiple events, I think it's gonna be a good idea to send out. Them all on one bigger postcard instead of brief postcards, it was like, oh, another, another.
Yeah.
Um and they went big to little and you couldn't read the last one for public works, but um. I think what I saw today, their post came out today, which was really nice, it had like, here are some of the. Key things that are coming up, just a list of that, that was really nice and how, I, I printed it, so I have it now, you know, um so I think. That kind of communication with events, especially where we're not sending out, this is tomorrow and this is the next day, and this is the next day, and we have so much going on. To have just like a page of, whoa, 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 here's what's going on.
What's going on this month.
Yeah, that's, that's.
That's where.
Uh first thing I do is I go to that page where they say what's going on and I go and back, so I go and do something.
Yeah. So I, I would grab to see that and us putting money into street signs again and the, you know, digits on them and. Having to post on it, that was always a hassle, I'd have to send them posting and, they're to print them, somebody have to come in there. Go crooked.
Uh yeah, my, my whole purpose for putting them was kind of to lead us to. Go big, go bigger, but you know, this discussion continues to be. They have much impact, I've had to deliver a lot of that to public safety, so. So yeah, that's kind of.
Otherwise.
We are, uh so Danielle's been working with our I T folks uh to try to get, we've had feedback from residents for, you know, their eye contact. Eye contact, so it's for the job, because it is, I mean, it's a marketing, the marketing platform, that's what it is. Or so I think some email filters might, so she's working with Universe to try to get it. Which it's, it's kind of hard because it doesn't come from us, right, it comes from, you know, if you go through eye contact, so. The S E F records. Do you have to do that? Uh so, but Universe is working on it, so hopefully that will help to, to get those messages authenticated and they might have, well, we also citizens a lot.
Yeah.
He sends a lot of them.
That's why the combination is wrong, yeah, when you, you know, here's a little bit, yes.
Um before we open for public comments, one question I, or I had just two. Um before we open for public comments, one question I or I had to make sure we have the right balance there, can you go down to the budget? Yeah, it's fine. I just noticed that the remaining dollars was seventeen thousand dollars, so seventeen thousand dollars less, and I just wanna make sure. Uh do we truly have forty two thousand or do we only have thirty two thousand in the straight days? There, uh so we spent, so we spent seventy five thousand and preparing replacement for a plan we spent three two. Okay, so maybe.
And as far as I go, right, that's true.
It is, I believe that's, we spent the seven thousand, we have twenty five thousand. Got it, okay, I was just making sure, my eyes were, I think I was not looking at the right column, okay, better, so it works out, I got. Okay, so.
Yeah, it's real quick, I I really appreciated when, before, when I was working. Uh being able to see at the end of full road there, when the city council committees work. Because I didn't have a whole lot of time to do, to go on the web sites, look at things up, and so I do think those signs encourage public involvement when you got. Political there, for example, for sure.
And and that's another popular option that we, you don't have a single sign here at City Hall, for example, that. Those information about these things, you know, so that when people drive onto the road, which is. You probably those, you know, kind of like city oriented, just read that that can be a place where we just advertise that that's like. Meetings or special events, and I'm sure that, you know, that would be. What's, I mean, what's I'm a lot easier to both, you know, change up or find, especially if it's here on the campus. So could we, you know, look at building a larger sign so we could, you know, actually have a lot, a large format. Uh message for, so if you can see it if you're driving.
Put the teachers to a monitor and then that way you can control it, you can do an outside monitor.
You don't want to just call.
Me, and like, when you drive down Main Street and you know, they have a, a, so I, it's just like, you know, beautiful, speaking, whatever it is, if they're doing it. And it's just a simple script sign, it doesn't have a picture for it.
If 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 we do have things that are simple to do. You could consider, you could, you could do exemptions for abandoned signs and we could get signs that are like. Uh city, city hall signs, I mean, I have slide in ones and 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 they're like real estate signs that you just slide it out.
Yeah, we, I should write down that's against code. And we give, we give variances for people that have a vet, so, you know, we could have signs that just say art best this weekend. And stick them on the residential streets, so that.
Those lines up anyway.
Okay, we have several signings, oh, spring cleaning, you know, this weekend. Sign that are used every time.
For the annual events.
It's like the parking event.
Those you can make part, that I used to have this for my store and kind of real estate likes, and I just slid those things in and and even if you don't do that. Um politics aside, I I reuse this, I just put my little political side up too. And so those are really simple places to solve this problem that are not gonna be that expensive now. And you and you could, you know, you could, you could actually um. Cement in the real estate sign and then just slide in the others, that they were significant, they're not that hard to get made.
Oh, you're talking about the metal.
Yeah.
I know, the metal, yeah, yeah.
You just slide it in.
Yeah.
And and then they're like, as big as you want, and then you can even have a logo on it. But for the cost that you're talking about, that's a low cost.
So that would be permanent?
The the sign holder would be permanent, yeah, you could, so I mean, it's gonna be something.
Are those allowed?
I think we start coming up.
The the, yeah, we have a significantly different than what we had, so there are a lot easier to just slide in only the major events. Even if you wanna do the proceed council, you can just say, please cancel tonight, or if you, if that's what you wanted to do, you know. Those middle signs are not hard to slide in now.
We have some in the parts.
Yeah.
So our.
I get most.
Everything's made up, we can bring, bring that up, that is an option, but it's not going to prevent the, how much work is your staff to kind of. Create those and play them and et cetera, I, it's worth having a look and just see how easy.
I've got over time, I just wanted to say you know.
No, this word, these could be a present, but.
Oh.
Would you like us to look at possibly designing a sign, you know, that that could be built, you know, in-house? To like a permanent sign on the city, so the city facilities that people see when they're driving by, is that something you'd like to look at possibly building?
I thought, me personally, it go forward, but it's extremely low priority, I I don't think, I'll give you the information this way, okay.
You just had to get quick then. On what?
Right, any other questions about this, I know, and we're not gonna, it's not like we're, but it's just a great back as a lower priority for future discussion. But but I I like, yeah, you also, if we go for this, it's something that we can do with the program or something that's, you know, a factor project. I think that I'd give a custom version versus something that's pre created. Is appealing because we can tailor people to feel that we might want to have for this case. Thanks, uh moving on to presentation items for discussion only, so no action, so. Um that's what I asked staff is that we have an opportunity to talk about two recent uh. If I was related to some art, I had a recent art, it all because, you know, the the water conservation is one of our budget priorities. I wanna make sure that we now have, as one of the seminars were occasioned as a phase, to provide any additional correction to the staff working base that wants to, as per all of the work. So, uh the first item is the uh discussion of the status of water conservation programs, uh and we'll begin with that.
So back in February, we had a presentation with Chris Maxwell Gaines, uh innovative water solution and. Um he had a lot of really great admission, uh people talking about rainwater, harvest state condition, a conservation standpoint, but also this farm are mainly. And why, it really kind of stated that there's two different messages, so half the version of our harvesting, that very part. That nature and a more active, these are very large, well, out in that water, the tanks and and those kind of uses of the water. Uh so the planning department maybe has been kind of looking over, they heat out a lot of those. Uh issues and how they comply and um some of the things that, you know, we saw is that there's a lot of technical or large harvests within the city. I mean, a lot of the houses have really great control when they're water harvesting. There are some houses that very hard have seen also maybe more of a challenge to, uh specifically, and the village beauty, beauty. That it it's a little bit Irish face, and one face to use water sometimes, so uh. That one of the, the committee kind of came up with recognition, they discussed, and they're gonna continue to discuss it, it's everything kind of providing more of recognition. So this is kind of a chance to come back to council and say, here's where we kind of are. And, you know, if there are any kind of feedback, any kind of direction, anything that we should consider, if we need to go forward and look at anything, so. What they came up with is basically it recommended that, uh you know, rainwater harvesting on every property is probably not. Most, you know, not just for the property side, but also people have to have buy-in into the program. So people have to say, I want to do rainwater harvesting, because there's some maintenance involved with that process. And if the city's going to invest fund in it, we wanna make sure the system has kept, used and kind of meets the goals of rainwater harvesting and water conservation. So they're looking at different options for different programs, um different kind of opportunities in different parts of the city. So it may have some more tailored kind of programs versus where you are in the city. Um so that may be that houses on this side of the city and even in the meadows may have a slightly different kind of rebate program than houses in the villages. Because there's different challenges there, different opportunities in those areas as well. And so, uh they're gonna continue researching and come back, the other thing that they wanted to do is make sure we're including commercial area. Because if we look at water use in the city, our biggest water users are gonna be commercial really. And looking at how they can piggyback onto the commercial rebate for the city of Austin in order to do it. And kind of make those even more enticing maybe for our commercial areas to be invested in. Uh and I think also the idea of that is that they would kind of, um then Austin also does a lot of the inspections, it makes it super neat for us to, you know. Manage a rebate program because they do a lot of the life work on it. Uh and so I think the committee would like to see this, since the valley is kind of a model environmental city for this program. And that, you know, we are really conserving water, or, you know, have really active residential participation. Um so that's kind of where they're adding, getting, you know, discussion feedback from council on anything where we should go with this next, so I guess I'll need to get through it.
Very good.
Um. One of the things I'd like to throw out there was, you know, not this year, things happen, but most years I have a lot of garden. And I wanna use rainwater as much as possible because the water in the city of Austin is very up. And, you know, that's not be for a lot of plants, so I'm gonna do things like adding vinegar as well. The to Austin water or there's a stuff I hope that's supposed to acidify uh the water. Um. And I wanna have things where I can do with water harvesting. But at least for me, the way I feel about it right now, even when we have a land, how much I want this great big tank. What would be really nice, I think, is if we have kind of a tiered system of from rebates for things like rain barrels. All the way up to these margins, you know, it's very large, uh water dish, kind of things. Uh and we offer incentives to people who wanna do this, where the incentives are large enough to be attractive. But not so big that you're getting what I mean, skinny, right? Because it shouldn't be so much that I don't, the city's gonna give me so much of this that I don't need to care about this in the future. Right, I mean, it it needs to be so that if you are personally making the biggest investment, that you're gonna maintain this, care about it. So I don't know if you like, with what a number is, like ten percent, twenty percent, whatever it costs. But if we had a kind of a manual options for people to do this, it would help incentivize people doing this without. Over incentivized, so that people don't care about it, just to throw that out.
That's very true.
So, uh I would agree with that, I think, I think the rebate has to be significant enough, but you do have to have skin at the end. That because you do have to maintain the system, uh so I I I get that. The the other thing is just having, you know, I look at lawn and lawn and, you know, water is going to be one of our scarce resources. And it's just gonna get worse and uh it will become more expensive and is it a better option? Uh to do a drought tolerant landscaping and it would be nice to have some analysis done. Uh you know, what would that cost, what would, what would it entail and versus having rainwater collection? And so some sort of analysis would be good, some sort of uh understanding of what a drought tolerant landscape is gonna look like. How how difficult to maintain, how difficult is it to convert to that? Um so and I think that is, if we can move in those directions, I think that would be really, really key.
Okay, I love that, I'd say, instead of people, or is it possible that it's also?
Yeah, yeah, and and the other thing, if you, if someone does do the rainwater, we probably should uh. Uh do something with that cover, you could put it in the setup, so.
And and that's something we discussed, um I don't know if you ever looked at the code regarding rainwater tanks, well, it's very. Kind of hard to follow what they were.
I did, yeah.
So I think that is, yeah, so that is the area we're gonna ask Jerry to look at when he comes back, he is gonna say, okay, what, how do we clean this up to make it? Okay, so that anybody could uncover what it's supposed to be.
Hey, uh that's our very first time in the customer.
We're so, I, when I read this, I made a note to myself, I I just don't understand that in the uh. Kind of the quote on the, says something about the committee is exploring different options for rebates and programs in different areas of the city. Such as reducing spur footage requirements for processing the villains. I don't understand.
Okay, so if you look at the, because the city currently does a rebate program for converting, you know, taking your lawn to a native lawn, taking lawns to that native. With landscape bed and taking the lawn to a other option. And there is a a certain amount of square footage that's kind of required to do that, qualify for the. Well, if you're in the villages, you may not even have that much yard to qualify.
Okay.
So so it's kind of reducing the number so that, you know, if somebody in the villages wants to convert their yard to a different, to a very, very easy area to take kind of principles. Then they would qualify for that rebate.
And or maybe you get like a percentage base of another thing.
Yes.
You're, so if you're doing a hundred percent of your lawn, it doesn't matter that. The rebate is different, but again, you know, I think it it, the impact is less, obviously, if you're only, that's a smaller portion, but. Having gone through recently some, you know, estimates for, I'd say, I, you know, changes including native, you know, uh vegetation and grasses. Um the rebates are just a problem, it's like, it's like, if you can make maybe five hundred dollars if you're converting a big area and, you know, the landscape work is. Twenty thousand dollars. So what you do a lot better, if you didn't do that twenty percent, you know, it'd be significantly, if you increase it, I think it's one thing, but. Just looking at the numbers like, you get ten dollars for a hundred square feet or something, I don't know, like, or whatever it is, you know, it's, in the villages, that's. It almost, it's, you get unfair beats out of most you can do for like a contiguous area, you know, so. I I think there's some improvements we could do there and I think certainly tailoring it for specific neighborhoods is is a useful uh analysis for forming. For exact same changes, so.
The uh the second thing there was, I feel like it said something about like educational.
Yeah, it's part of the, right, education.
Yeah, which sometimes to me is. And like, oh, who's gonna go to that, I uh I have two water tanks, we gotta rebate for each one. And I can so paralyzed, I must never use the water in them because it's just like, I save this water, or, I don't know. I I just, I need somebody to tell me, go use the water.
Go use the water.
How much, like, if it's been a week or two weeks since the last rains. I care about the state of the tree, the gra- our grass is a disaster, but the trees and some of the smaller plants, I wanna keep them alive, so. I also want there to be eye contact, it's just like, or whatever, it's. You know, use the water now, because it is, like, you're now in drought stage, whatever, and if you have water, use it. So either, yes, educational programs where I go learn that or just, hey, go, go use the sitting water and water your periods. Because this is now in the danger period for, for, you know, your, your plants.
Right, uh well, and I think one of the things we needed out at Open House is your soil moisture. Test, so that's something to make sure to use something like that to see what the moisture levels are, you know, if that would be an idea. Should I water or not, you water, on desire rain tanks. When it rains, you need to make a rain tank, so you need to use that water, I mean. And you need, so get the water in, go ahead and, you know, use it, so. We got like, we have over here with the um tank that's behind City Hall, that that one, the community garden. And generally how that works is that when it rains, they build up and it then, they use that water, it drops down to a certain level. Once it gets to a low level in a tank, if it doesn't rain, we can have a bill that will fill it back up to a certain level and just keep it kind of going down. So that it will have room in it all the time, right? You know, unless we get like a four inch, boil water, all by the four inch, but it will, whatever, but. You have to kind of read the how to medium, so in order to, whatever you got in the tanks, go ahead and use those things to water your ground.
Yeah.
From the back, don't, don't, don't save it because you don't, you wanna make sure that you can find the right.
I just have a thing, so one thing that we discussed, uh Carolyn was, uh for, you know. We really do wanna encourage, you know, residents that want to buy in and want to install a system, you know, it would be good to have it affect their irrigation. So that the the rainwater, their their harvesting is, you know, irrigating their lawns, thereby, you know. Uh reducing our reliance to purchase wholesale water, to irrigate lots, right? But, uh you know, to do that, it's gotta be cooked up and then we'll have that flow, and so there's an annual inspection. So maybe as a part of this program, right, we have the initial rebate where the city helps offset the cost of installing, you know, the system. Of course, it's on the resident then to maintain this, however, city could do an annual rebate to basically pay for, you know, the the resident goes and gives the inspection. And then city will reverse the annual infection, that can be another benefit. That can be another benefit, uh, because again, we want to encourage the, the rainwater harvesting to be cooked up and irrigated. If you have a, a lot of it. This is. That's my question.
Wanted to take on with, um, water being, doing drought tolerant landscaping, you still want a water foundation. And so maybe, uh, based on the sulfur wastes. And then would we consider artificial turf?
That's a great question on artificial turf. So there's a, it's kind of a first of all, artificial turf does not have many people that's about it. It also, some people would say it also doesn't teach you that, leaving out the kind of, uh, spiraling on grass well. Uh, however, it often doesn't use water. Uh, so, so I, I've worked on, and it also doesn't require one. It doesn't require one, personally, there are, I mean, I mean, you have to probably do a lot more research into what it will turn. I know that, um, yeah, I, I think it's going to just take more than just, I think I think there's one house in the building that has some artificial.
Well, it was corporate customer, Burdette.
Yes.
This is the idea for, you know, it's pretty hard for, because they have it in their backyard.
Right.
Um, yeah, but it's more of a lane green.
But you do use the little pellet thing that may also happen. So it, it, it's it, it, it's a mixed bag. And because I know that Ruby did, Burger Center. They did, I think they had originally required the sand versus the, the rubber writing policy they usually use. So, uh, that is something that will have to be considered regarding artificial turf. We have a whole thing to.
Okay, oh, sorry, that's where I got to just pull your names.
Uh, is artificial turf purpose? Can be very low. How to install? So, and the other question I have is, um, how feasible is it for, um, say like the the homeowners association and the betters to do?
Yeah, because, yeah.
That's water garden.
Text and property code, this is for rainwater harvesting, but I don't, I was going to add some customer resources that are reached. They know if it's in their files, but then there's, there's text of law that prevents HOAs from banning rainwater harvesting. So.
It wasn't ours, that one, what I love still, but.
So, so that, so the HOA, that's why we originally were like, oh, well, we need to have to do something different for the Meadows. But that, it can't do it, so you guys would be eligible for a few of that. Uh, as far as rain yard, I don't know, landscaping, zerscaping. I got, that's a great question there. That, I'm still having all that grass.
Zerscaping, uh, if I don't want it to.
It's a bad, a certain percentage of grass. So I would give it a percentage. So that's something we'll have to look at. It could be a drought tolerant grass. It could be, you have a lot of grass, yeah.
And the grass is very drought tolerant. So then you can probably have water in our description.
I think so, yeah. So, so. I think we'll, we'll, we'll check with you guys on those HOA requirements for that neighborhood, see what was here.
Yeah, in fact, uh, so we put aside like a million dollars. So I think we can be the committee could be a little more extravagant in some of their recommendations on the dollar amounts for some of these. So, uh, we want to encourage it, um, and also if, and, and also, you know, it's still having skin in the game type of process, you missed out.
Yeah, for that.
Uh, there's a, so as soon as we started talking about artificial turf, and I don't know the state of it, but I, I read this article about, um, players that had played with the, the Phillies, you hear about this, and six of them, uh, that played, they all had brain cancer.
Yeah.
And it was all in contact with the, so I would, yeah, I would, uh, honestly do plenty of research on.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not going to put bigger studies like that, but, you know, just, I wouldn't want to play on it.
They're, they're not supposed to be.
Well, I, well, I think it's just, you know, the, the, just podcasting of the, yeah, so. Uh, but this, this was just like in early March, so it's just like, in, I've been back to this article multiple times, just because uh, this has been coming up lately, so, yeah, no, I would be.
And I'd also ask, just in terms of the city, um, property, especially in this area, because we can do advantage of the budget of the site for increasing our water concentration and our, anywhere, or another, the neckier, but this way everything. You pass that on for other cities, you know, probably said something that I like to, to consider increasing some of the money for to set aside large amount and we benefit the city in general that, um, properties to set.
And I only agree with that, because the city is a big water, very big water.
Any further discussion on the site? Any members of the public? Right, thanks for the due session. Um, that'll move on to the next presentation item, which is, uh, the better lighting against the vulnerable against her staff overview.
Uh, so if you go back kind of looking historically at Sunset Valley, uh, looking at some comprehensive plans, um, I think that Valley always said it was a dark sky. It's literally like, you look at the twenty eleven comprehensive, like Sunset Valley was dark sky, like, written in that point. Uh, and so in twenty eighteen, this has passed after, probably, turning out, almost two years of, you know, research and going back to work, so they passed, um, and had more lighting ordinance, um, that we had in twenty eighteen, and then of course the, uh, state came along around twenty nineteen, and another one in twenty twenty one. That kind of limited the city's ability to control building materials, and they included outdoor lighting in that. So what essentially happened at that point, kind of, is the city committed, um, enforced the ordinance that we already passed. Um, and so, uh, you, the, one of the things we're working on this year is providing that comprehensive plan. And we talked about, you know, since this has been in the previous comprehensive plans and going forward, is it something that we it's kind of created this confusion about what dark skies certification means. So back in the beginning of March, we had the, what we call the better lighting, and all, because really dark skies are kind of a, it's not that we want to turn off all the lights, we don't want to, we don't want to turn off all the light. We want to make sure we light up the things that need to be lit up and that, you know, we have, uh, this safe. So one of the things that, um, that better lighting, I think we came up with, you know, really great information, you know, why, you know, dark sky, what they called our sky for flat lighting, it's really better lighting. And how, you know, the city has really got a lot of areas that are already got a lot of compliance, and the city's kind of been working at dark sky that probably year of nineties, basically. Uh, but they also showed in that presentation that there was a need for additional lighting places. And I think there's a thing that we've kind of been circling around in various committees, talking about some improvements to burning lane and, and accessibility, lighting, um, yeah, just walkability, different things on burning lane that need to get improvements in. As you said, you know, roads are a bit of a black hole, you go out there, I mean, we made it down earlier, that tonight it may not be dark yet, but when you go out to Brody and I, Brody and area, because we don't have free lighting, there's going to be there like five blocks or anything, so, uh, it's, so, in order for the city to enforce the ordinance that was adopted in twenty eighteen in the city, and what the state has done, would, is required to pass a resolution, which states that we're pursuing a dark skies certification. And so what the planning environment committee can make that city council go ahead and adopt the resolution, a resolution supporting the better lighting in Sunset Valley by pursuing the dark skies certification. But to also, because there's been all this confusion and stuff, to reset that sunset provision, originally there was a sunset provision that was going to say that everybody had to come in compliance by a certain time, and that's, you know, it's coming up in the handful or here, but they're basically reset that sunset provision to whenever the resolution is passed, to those who hold tenure. Which also means that we wouldn't need, we wouldn't be looking to move forward in the certification path for at least five years, because you've got five years, you're going to be able to comply. So it's kind of like setting a little bit of a timeline there. Uh, and, and also maybe as a project for fiscal year twenty four is to work with the community on what it is Brody's going to look like, what kind of lighting you want, if you want to talk to the shopping centers about making a better, you know, accessible trail along the east, the east side of Brody. And some other things, and really kind of focusing on that kind of Brody area, which, we have Come Deep a Wolf Bar, John Brody, RW. Um, Brody is the main thing that connects all the shopping centers over there, you know, across the street. So really kind of putting some effort and some work into what Brody's going to be quite. Won't be a project that would be completed, like next year, we want to be putting shelves on the ground, sure, but at least we can maybe come up with a plan on what it is, what's the operating how we recruit lighting on Brody as well. So that's kind of where we left it, um, the committee, um, and, yeah, we'll be happy to answer any questions. Anybody has regarding this?
That's perfect.
So I've got lots of ideas and thoughts. Yeah, yeah, first I want, I want to make a point that, one of the points that they made, that, that seminar was very good. Uh, thank you to Planning Environmental for putting that on, so we were, uh, moderating it and such. Uh, consultants were very good. One of the points they made was that, um, it's like all of, of like, a lot of West Austin is already going like dark sky, and we're kind of at the tip of it. And before, we were like, just a little tiny little circle surrounded by Austin. And it was, oh, it always felt kind of, feels a little insignificant, you know, whatever we do is insignificant.
Right.
But now that you have all of the West Austin moving in that direction, or had moved, then it, it does become like, you know, there's more continuity, yeah, there's more continuity and it makes more sense. Uh, so I, I, I thought about this a bit, and so I came up with my little plan, but I thought are some steps that I thought might make sense. So, I'm, I'm thinking we probably want to do, and, and that consultant did a little bit, but performed an assessment of what our road deficiencies are in the, in the retail. And, and then let's develop a rebate program. So we have a carrot approach. Uh, a rebate program, because those costs will just get sent down to all our businesses, you know. And so it would be nice if we had a rebate program for the shopping centers where, uh, you know, whatever, you know, we can rebate what it costs for them to update. But then I would also say, you know, let's have it expire in two years for they can do it, get it done. You know, let's, let's encourage a quicker adoption. Um, and then I would, uh, work with that lighting consultant or someone like that and figure out Brody lane. I think we need an expert. I don't think it's necessarily, I mean, it, it, it can go through committees, but I think we need a consultant to come in and say, this is what we need. I mean, they talked a lot about the lighting on Ernest Road, like how nice that was. And so I, I'm assuming it would look a lot like that, and, and that would actually look lovely. It would, it would give our city that, or that village kind of look to it, and I think that would be very nice. And it would feel safer for, uh, it, or it would give the perception of safety uh, for, for any, anybody that's in shopping. Um, so that, so then we would, uh, get the plan, install the lighting, we need the resolution passed. And then I would also look at our residential rebate program. Uh, I don't know how many people have used it. Uh, but it's like two light fixtures for a hundred and twenty-five dollars. And, you know, I looked at my house, I have four, and with a hundred and twenty-five, even like a dent, I don't know. Uh, you know, uh, but maybe a little more robust program there is to encourage greater participation. Maybe have a lighting event with some lighting vendors, you know, with different, uh, different fixtures come in, and would you come in and get a good deal maybe, and say, and that would be just a great way, and then get it done, and it just might be a, a really fun way to do that. So those are some of my thoughts.
I can tell you, I know the consultant who's here, who was lighting here, he's ready to help us with the, like, I'm studying already to get what is to be done, what some options are. And I, I agree, I think, I, I, I think I will be lighting in, frankly, obviously, it's it's going to take a little lot of everything for Brody, but I think having a consultant to, that's their job, they're lighting, they're lighting with good and, and stuff is, is important.
Yes, and compliant, and so, yeah, we can have, uh, you know, we get, get everything, yeah.
City administrator, sorry. Yeah, it was, I've talked to Carolyn, and talking to Jerry, uh, just, you know, as we're going through sliding discussion, as we're going through the, I know, we've got rewrites, I think it's time to look at our sign ordinance. And, uh, you know, we get a lot of sign current applications in from stores, and, you know, we, we, we require all light sign lighting to be back, right, reverse channel, that's not standard for shopping. And so I, I, I think it would be good, you know, to work with staff or with consultants, say, what is, you know, what is better lighting for the shopping centers that would make? Because sometimes I think if you're driving down Brody, our stores look closed because of the reverse channel lighting. Rather than actual, actual having face lit.
Yeah.
And you can have face lit signs, because I, I've, I've seen in other shopping, it's like South Park Meadows, doesn't have a lot of bright lights, but the the actual letters of the stores are lit, to me, which in your case, oh, this, this store is, store is open.
Yeah.
So, because currently, uh, a, a store has to get a variance to have a front lit. That's brilliant.
I think these are all very good ideas, but I think first thing we should do is and have staff with their resolution, uh, supporting better reading Sunset Valley, find us, with our sites.
Sorry.
So I would feel more comfortable pursuing that if I felt confident that Brody lane would be lit appropriately. So if they would have to go hand in hand to me, I do not want to sacrifice our, uh, shopping areas, uh, for that, so I would, and they can go hand in hand, so.
I don't think you sacrifice anything, right? That we do not have rain on Brody at all. And people who are sold in on dark skies came in and said, we need to put lights on Brody. You need to do this work as part of your dark skies program, as part of the delay. So I don't think there's been a reason to delay passing, or was it pushing for dark sky lighting? Or that, I don't think one device, only number six is dependent on one.
Oh, so if I remember correctly, when they were doing that presentation, um, though, they went, uh, one from dark skies went around all the shopping centers that night, and really the shopping centers are pretty much compliant.
That's definitely.
Um, and so I don't really think that's the problem. I think the problem is on Brody, and I really think that needs to take a higher priority. And it's something that CED talked about three years ago, and I thought we'd gotten down the road with that. When we were talking about having folks to put the banners on, it's all part of that whole thing with ampersand, and, yeah, it just didn't go anywhere. But I think when I drive down, down at night, there's, I see the lights in the shopping center, but it's dark on the road, and so it doesn't look like, it, it's not that the shopping centers look closed. It's that everything that leads up to them looks, looks like you're in the middle of nowhere.
Yeah.
And so I think that's the priority, personally. It's really addressing that, getting a consultant to really address that, and I think that's the best thing we can do for me too. I think so too.
The, uh, yeah, that, that event was awesome, and I had emailed emails from residents concerned about dark sky, and I was always in there trying to, you know, break down what they thought would be like, well, it's going to require the lights turn off, whatever, point by point through the emails, and so it was really nice just to have, not, not them listening to me, you know, like it says, like, these are the experts, fans. And I felt like, um, they were, well, there's the, the questions and concerns, and as I was looking at answers, or people's questions being answered, seemed to be like like, a little bit of an exhale, it's like, this is something that we could actually do. I need to talk to either of you, and just tell me what I'm looking for next time I go down Brody. I don't, I don't get that there's not enough, I, lighting, maybe you, I don't know, so I want to hear what the problem with the lighting in Brody is. Now that I'm against changing it or anything else, but I don't.
There isn't it.
If you drive down Brody, the only light actually exists in our new lot, um, the shopping center. There is no street light, there's no pedestrian lighting, there's nothing on currently. I mean, you even go to intersections, there's no like. A lot of times you have streetlights with, I mean, you have like traffic lights or streetlights that are making them, no, that's not the case in this area. Um, so if you look at, and, and most of ours will probably on the village side. The market bear, they're generally come to Brody. But if you look at the village side, the village has such a big landscaping bonus, so there is a. Very large area with no light at all.
So I guess like you were saying, the store might probably be straight. I, I will make an effort to look at it, but I. Literally, I don't know.
Like the village.
The.
They're right there.
They're right on the street. I can't, I would say also Brody event center side of the home state because that, that, that's a very long, long area for you to. Obviously, two ninety five comes as very little, but Brody itself, the Brody side of that is off.
You, you know, we have a policy on what my personal preference is, but. The, the reverse network, I think those signs look so cool. And I think sometimes just all the colors of the stores, it's a little bit. You know. A little bit much for me, so. It's actually, if you're frustrated with the development side, just because it's not industry standard, it's often they have to submit a permit and then send it back, you know. And I, you know, I get it, yeah, it's, it's more of that kind of the country club deal that does the first channel. But it's not the industry. I don't know, we, but I, I think it's a. It will remain a great place to do business and we don't ask for a ton and. You, I just, they're not, oh, no, no, I totally, I totally get it, but you know. When I hear some. Someone makes it hard to do it, it's like, we, there's no property justice. So you can all that money put it towards this one side of the internet. Uh, so we're. A good place to business, the, um. The better life, I, I really liked the pictures that they had. In dripping springs and then also kind of the, this was what. You know, they had the person that was standing at the fence.
Yeah.
And if I would just set up a. Yep. When that light manager goes to whoever it is, goes to, in the kind of presents. You know, before we do anything, I'd like to see like what this is what Brody would look like. It's, it's the same thing that I said to the, the sign people, the, for more people where. You know, people, it's about like to get on board and they almost have to see it. To say, that's scary, you know. Whatever side of the billboard that make your own. If you can't pull one out there on a flathead truck and just, you know, demystify it for people, it may happen, you know, it's just, it's too boring. So, uh. We like metrics here. So that, that's what I would like to see, just like what this would look like if they had a change call.
Okay. And so what I can do is I can definitely, I, I can reach out to consultants here. And depending on cost, we may have to officially go out, our P or our Q for this kind of situation. Um, but we can see what, what that kind of. Cost is to do kind of that initial kind of first glance of Brody and see where, you know, what, what we're looking at, everything. And we can bring something like that back to see where we are with that. And so. Um, and, and like, as you said, it, 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 these things can move along together too. So we could do. Bring back a resolution and we can even reference, and they're talking about Brody in that resolution that we brought, that Brody is a place that may need. More light, more. Maybe better lighting in, in that area. And so I can look at both of those and handle both three, both of those kind of items.
And, and we're talking just in the commercial area because I run pretty duck yet and when it gets into. I don't know how people are comfortable running in pitch black, but I kind of like it. Uh, but you know, when I get. Get past that, you know, that shadows and, and farther south, you're just running through darkness and it's so nice to just. You know, you're back in nature in a moment and you get better. I really like that stretch. That's right.
Um, for the bias and resolution. I first wish would be that instead of using more dark sky, that we could say better lighting. Uh, because the city of Texas, I won't believe you.
No, we're gonna have to eventually say that we're doing a dark skies with patient. We can't, we can't get around that. Which I had a whole kind of thing, kind of bizarre that. State basically sued this to another organization and so it, it, but. And that city already passed an ordinance for binding the revolution and, and so it's all kinds of, the language says. Pursuing dark sky as a revolution. So, so it would have to say that, I think, but we can craft it in such, such a way that we can say, you know, we are, we're in better.
Guys, so sentence that I found my word. That is, whereas the city of Sunset Valley is suing better lighting. With the enforcement of regulations about the Sunset Valley in twenty eighteen. With the idea of suing dark sky. The ten years as a timeframe in the date of resolution.
Alright, you want to send that to me, you can definitely do that. Maybe do another rare ads talking about Brody and we can do.
I just wanted to say we're. This discussion we kind of. One is pursuing, uh, dark sky resolution. And the other is, which came out of customizing pursuit of test. Better lighting at Brody. Like both are two different things. Asking for a resolution. Does not prevent us from giving much better lighting at Brody. Right?
Right.
They are, they're, they're two different things, but I do. The lighting along Brody is really important. This is maybe the best thing that we can do for our retail centers. And the actions you pursue, I think is great, I mean. Well, the one is not.
Yeah, I just, uh, there are. Residents who have different, uh. Perceptions about that. I think if you combine the two. They would feel much better about it. And they would feel confident that it's not going to hurt the retail center, et cetera. And. You know, I like the idea of, hey, people getting excited about it and feeling good about it. And I think that's what would do it. Uh, when we talk, when I talk about dark sky with other, uh, residents, it is like, oh, it goes on, you know, and it's not. There's not a lot of acceptance for some people. And so I think, because there are concerns. So.
I think both you are a great point, they aren't, they are separate things that we pursue. But there is benefit in saying what we're doing on Brody is. Is better lighting, right? It's kind of this, it's tied to what we want to do is to be supportive. Different areas with different needs, but all under this umbrella of better lighting, right? And I, another thing that we, as you mentioned, I've heard, so I really like this. This idea of bringing options to residents, you know, with some sort of. You know, like, like a, a lighting event, right? And where I would love to just. Go there and say, what is it that I, what are the options, go by place rather than going to people and like, uh.
That's such a smart.
Right. I mean, it, it, that kind of thing is, would be, I think, really nice for the purpose that. You know, to see the options and say, oh, this will fit, you know, live well here, it's beating those criteria and. You know, we're, we're getting to, to kind of pursue that as a. Together. So I, I like that idea too, but it is separate. For me, especially this. You know, for me, the key thing is that. The state legislature, for whatever reason, included this. Weird exception. They said you can't regulate, you know, with these areas, but if you're doing this, then you can't, right? And, and for us, I think it's. It's important, right? It's just from that legal standpoint to have. The resolution for, at the same time that we're restricting, like, right? I would really like to spread out consultants, you know, and, or if we need to go R Q. Do that because I think it, when I get to Brody, I'm looking at it from like a. Like, you know, props might be like running down there or walking down there. It's not, not that you, but when I think about it, it's like. Yeah, it's like. At night, it's really, it's really dark. I know, but I know stores are open, but, you know, from an external view, it's protected, it's really, I. I don't know what to do. Uh, make sure those, those centers are pure and light, right? That's right. And then we'll do all the comments. Unless it, yes, well, the miracle is happening. I think, I think. So, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. So, uh, when I also. Probably they didn't know stores were open or not, I. I'm not, I'm not gonna go over there unless I. And there's just no way. And I want them to. Stores that are completely lit. Shunting, shunting, oh, I guess are closed. So just lights have nothing to, to do with it. And I can see the website. So, uh, you're never gonna fully, uh, mitigate that. The, I. One thing about that panel which was so great was having more people buy into it, uh, and. So I, I want to see us pass it. I want more people to be. Uh, less afraid of this. What are the, I mean, what are the emails that I saw? It was. International dark sky, who is, who is this international group? The base of Tucson? So I think, I think they're protecting outwards to the rest of the world, less than somewhere like Geneva. You know, pointing at, at Texas. So it, it's, it's a very southwest organization trying to preserve what, what is great about the southwest. And so, uh. My, my goal is to pass that and if there's some people that never want to be on board. If, I, I, I feel like there's so much that it can offer that. I, I think it's really an easy sell, so. I want people to keep on to those questions and let them know that it is kind of a conversation that you have with. Is it I D S A?
I D.
National dark. I D.
Anything.
So, um. Yeah, and whether it's six. Anywhere between six and one on those steps, I, I don't care, but it's going to be a step that I, I want us, uh. To eventually. Uh, a step that we should take.
So I, I agree with, um. That we should, I think we need to do the resolution. It's been hanging out there for a long time. It provided information, hopefully people can go online and look at it if they missed the, and. Um, because I, I think it's really unfair that before we do what the state did. We held the. Yeah, the big, the big lighting. Uh, problem in our city, which is Burger Center accountable to our lighting orders. And then all of a sudden. The state stepped in and restricted our ability to enforce our ordinance. And we had, uh, the village come up with their lighting and we held Burger Center accountable, but we couldn't hold the village accountable. And so I think if we really want to have better lighting in our city, we need to get that done. As soon as possible, pass that resolution and. How, how about we look at, um. Getting some information, maybe at the same time in the same meeting where we're looking at. Passing the resolution that we also have some information on the lighting consultant. The information on our agenda about our intention of looking at consultant to look at Brody Lane. Uh, because I, I think most of them, everything I've heard from residents about the retail. They're all worried about the retail and about the sales tax, which is better than it's ever been. Um, and, and so. That's, the stores are okay. The, they're okay. It's, it's what leads up to the stores and especially in front of the village because of that long, um, space where it's. That buffer and it'd be great if you had, you know, some kind of trail there so you're not going up and right over it. And had that with it. And one of the things that the lighting guy said, which I thought so accurate in. I mean, versus in cities, is, is the horizontal lighting. So that you can see what's in front of you when you're walking, not just what's underneath the wall. So I think that's really important for the pathways. Uh, but it, but how, how about we look at that? Coming on the same agenda or talking about proving the lighting and we're doing the dark sky resolution. Or maybe we're looking at our queue in the same meeting or something. So that, so it's tied in that way.
Yeah, I, I think it's important to do it together. Um. And, and I'll, I'll say why, your comments. Made me feel like, man, we need to do it together because you're, you were like. What's wrong with Brody, you know? And, you know, and so it's like, okay, you know. And there's no, uh, I don't see anybody doing any lights, so it's not like you have to do it tomorrow for the dark sky. Uh, I mean, I think we passed that. So it's not like we, we have to get it done, but we need to get it done at some point. And if we can do it together, that makes sense because I think you would get more buy-in and I think that's important.
Alright, let's go to, go to public comments. Good. Uh, any resident feedback?
This is always twenty-six weeks. I think it's a great discussion. I'm really excited we're having it. I think I want to just throw a few more factors in. So when we're talking about Brody Lane. Uh, I'd like people to maybe, especially on council, look back at Great Streets purpose in Austin. And, and the reason, and we talked about this in both works, because as, as we're walking into the lighting consultant. The issues of safety are, are a big factor. Um, the thing is about the problem is that it is under our control. Usually we're saying, well, this is a challenge to you, this is a challenge. The problem is Brody Lane and our right way. So we actually have the ability to impact our problem. That's wonderful. So talking to Randy McNell in the public group meeting, we have enough space in our right way to create pathways. Pedestrians, to create separate pathways for bicycle and the road. And your lighting in, in those paths. And this is along the, the model of the Great Streets purpose. So this is, then you can look in Austin and look at this, I think we did that back in the days. Um. When I was first really getting involved with a lot of city planning. And so that, that'll give you a visual, if you go look at, at that, and I, I just Google and it still pops up. Uh, so, so look at, at that, when you have these separate pathways and then naturally we also want to incorporate the new light. Because where, where you, where you do that, because we're talking about, um, middle, middle overlay of Brody, it could have messed with that as long as I've been here. And so while we do all of this, this is, this is something we can do in our control and. I do believe that the very next thing we should do. Is pass the dark side resolution because when we talk about the lighting, we want to be able to say, Austin, yes, we're pursuing a dark side certification. So tell us which dark sky lighting you'll help us put there because sometimes our poison only. A non-dark side choice. And so we want to be able to have that linked as we talk about this. Talking to the consultant, not only will we talk about Brody, he will talk about the whole downtown area. They, they do it within a certain thing. Because they do city evaluations all the time. I talked to him after that. And so they'll, they'll, uh, uh. A bid for also evaluating the shopping centers so we can probably get some of that signage in discussion in there. I asked him about that. So I think that's a really important part of this. Some of you might recall that was the thing that I tried to do when I was on council, was talk about what we do about signage. Um, so, so I think we want to see what all the options are available, not only reverse channel, which she was very happy about for dark sky lighting. But if there are other dark sky options that we can put on the menu for, for our businesses. Then, uh, we, we do have a, a serious issue with pedestrian safety. The way that it is done now, if you try to walk that at night, especially down over by, uh, the overpass. It is, is very difficult to do at night. I was, I was scared walking across the street there. And so I think we need to look at that as we build the better, better version of Brody. And we are already in almost all those shopping, I think, card, card account when we did that, we put the restrictions in about our skyline. So they are compliant. When we saw things that weren't compliant, they had something somebody snuck in after the fact. So it's not like, uh, we didn't design this, we designed it as it should be. And so I think we may come with new options. And we have to do some better things because we, we checked the lights and so instead of, um. Three thousand, they've pushed up to four thousand, you know, because in, in replacement according to the light meter. So those are just things that we need to pay attention to, but, but all of them, we were there. You know, that was the day we went searching high and low, we got enough core examples of violations. We, we, we were mostly there in the shopping, shopping didn't even have the issue. Our, our issue is our problem, which is Brody Lane and we can fix it. Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to speak to getting the dark skies resolution in place as soon as possible. Because we're gonna have some kind of five-year sunset thing and as new lighting, new things come in. We're gonna have to allow those people time to adjust to dark kind of interpretation. So I think we should do it as soon as possible. We were reassured by everybody on the council. Everybody from dripping springs to this person who had done lots of this lighting design. That none of them do have any negative impact on any commercial institution from being in a dark sky compliant city. So we don't have anything to worry about in terms of our retail, our commercial areas whatsoever. The other thing I'll just say is that when we say it's good to be. The other thing I'll just say is that when we say it's good to be. We want to know that it's a healthy living environment. We know light at night is carcinogenic. We don't affect the. Girls and how they get their periods. We know that any light at night is not. So is less light as possible, it's better biological. Also, when you have lights, streetlights and come down and just focus on the ground. We forget about, we say it's good to be here. We want it to be good for all the little creepy crawlies that support our ecology and our life. And it disrupts those insects at night that are living on the ground and haven't moved near or those pools of light. It is a destructive force, really. So we want to keep that to a bare minimum. As long as we're not really causing ourselves a big financial problem with something else. And apparently, we're not. But not having the resolution in place means we cannot regulate our lighting. And what city wants to be in a position where they can't regulate the lighting? And why shouldn't you do that like tonight, I mean, me? That's fine.
So what I heard um from the discussion is bringing back some, I just want to raise them from staff or the the. The lighting engineer in terms of what the. Um the range, you know, might be so that we can know maybe the RQ, but also kind of like what that scope might entail. Um I know customers are going to report language for some of the resolutions. We also started working on a primary resolution and and having that. Uh but again, probably at the same time is a good idea just to say, we're hacking this together because, you know, there. I I think there's, there's multiple, you know, inputs that are received from residents to say. You know, how can we discuss this in a thoughtful and, you know, way that we understand it? And, you know, I think the Brody example is one of those things that people can relate to. And so we, we, I'm glad that we had that seminar, but we're starting to be able to get sensitive. And it like, it it's nice to hear that the retail centers are not, you know, out of compliance by and hard. Um but I also like the idea of like incentivizing those that are paying the way that that they can get them back in compliance with some, you know, some rebates. And especially if there's areas of a little danger to with different lighting that is maybe more effective too. Um so I really like that idea that you had, that there is about um expanding that uh rebate idea to this listener as well. Um I was gonna make a quick question because I've noticed the last few nights, I don't have a chance. It's just me noticing, but I slept burger stadium like all night long.
Next day and five AM they turn on. I I was actually, I meant to make a note about that, that they turn them on really early.
Yeah, so they turn late and then they turn on early. Yeah.
I don't know what in the world we do. It's usually the big, no, there's no fan. And I think it's usually the baseball stadium.
I've noticed your state, I've noticed all the stadium lights coming on, like when I get up in the morning, I'm like, they're always on. And and I I don't know, I think that's grabbing, but it it's just, it's just recently that I've seen their lights on and different like.
We can, we can, we can ask questions about what's.
And that's the brightest source lighting in our city. It's like.
It is.
You know, all the neighbors. I'm here.
If we're opening up to, I know. And we think basically all of our money from the shopping centers and so. Acting them into the uh, it's a rebate program makes a lot of sense. I I wonder how much would be to also open that up to I I see it and on my, on my side of town, right over here. That elementary school is cannot be compliant to for dark skies. It is, there is one light historically in my house. Ten years I've been wondering that light. Uh I just went over there and just.
Find a light and solve it for.
Yeah, so but you know, Miriam, who is at. Two, she has two lights at point directly in her place and then we'll have a little house multiple place point that ends. Whatever you guys need to do in order to kind of get these pointing down, because any light that leaves your property isn't doing you any good.
Right.
So I I think if it. They spend a lot of money on suns or on on gates. So I I guess it'll be the money, but it is a little bit of a carrot to help us switch off those lights as well.
Shouldn't our code be dressed? It would, but we can't, we're doing anything.
Austin, you can enforce, you can enforce that license on somebody's property. I don't. I'm gonna talk about that.
Yeah. It's got. Our own business.
Yeah, I think it's.
Barbara.
It's not about, it's not about re, about building materials. They just need to point it down.
Is it enforceable or regarding a nuisance because of what the state legislator said?
I repeat that again, I'm sorry.
So could they, i- i- if. Because there's two portions of this. When we did it in twenty eighteen, we were, we did the outdoor lighting section, which was part of the land development code. And we also did some nuisance lighting requirements. Does, because does the state code affect nuisance lighting? Because it's still outdoor lighting.
It, it does affect nuisance lighting. But there, I mean, obviously, there's that carve out for the dark skies.
Can we enforce it from a nuisance perspective unless we.
You can, you can if it crosses property lines.
How do we prove that? Picture. Yeah, but.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if it, if, well, I mean. It's kind of like, how do you enforce sound crossing? Property lines. You know, you go out to the edge of the property and and you you do, you you take a picture, you figure out. If it's being, you know, if if a light is directed into somebody's backyard, into somebody's. You know, uh window into, you know, in areas that it really shouldn't be, uh, you know, if it's. If, and so nuisance has to be, you know, something that's more than just an errant. You know, it it's a little too bright or it's a little too much. It has to be really more in a, in a sense directed in a way that uh. Uh does not allow somebody to enjoy the the privacy in in a area of their own property. And so, you know, when you start looking around at streets, you don't have nearly as as much latitude on. On that sort of thing. I mean, it's, it's more a private issue than it is a a public issue. Would that make? Did I answer your question?
This is potentially in my thesis of like nuisance like that sometimes we can.
Possibly, yeah.
Yeah, you can, you can pursue nu, I mean, any nuisance, you have the ability to pursue nuisances. It's just what are you defining as nuisance lighting? And how are you defining it? And and can a, an officer or code enforcement actually go out there and say, yeah, this is a nuisance? I mean, are you training your personnel to do that?
City, you know, I was, I would say that this situation would be much easier if we had dark sky because it would just be pointed down at the ground, but I mean, I think. You requested A I S D in the smart housing. I'm sorry, this is my, my house is a topic, though of the space here, but it, you know, on current events for a lot of people where it's just a light pointed directly at your house and it's like. We went to the people group and the smart house was like, yeah, I mean, since A I S D and then nothing happened. That was two years ago. So. But, yeah, for forever, that's been that way, but it. Like she said, it's. If it just becomes a private matter, like what are we supposed to do? They could just say no, and then that's it. But if we had a, I feel like we had dark skies. You actually have to.
Right there.
Yeah, and.
It does make.
It definitely, dark skies would help with the high school. But. And and quite frankly, I I do think, Rob, your your situation with uh the school. If it, if they are directed into your house in any way, I mean, you could. You could potentially pursue that as a claim against them. And any of your other neighbors where it is, I mean, and and the problem is they're not necessarily try, and and the way they would get, get out of it if I were arguing for that. I'm not purposely. Trying to point a light. Into Rob Johnson's house. I am trying to light it enough that all students and anyone on campus is safe. During the day or night. Now, how do you counter that? In a court?
So it's a more like. Super.
Yeah. And so. Um so again, with these items that, you know, the ones, this one is a lot of because I, I want to continue to follow up and make sure that we're getting constant feedback as we consider this. Um so staff, I appreciate you uh listening to your feedback and bringing back uh more information as uh we've been. Is there any further discussion on this side?
Um, I I would like very an executive rest staff to be here.
So what I would like staff to do is to go back to the lighting engineer and talk to them about um what type of engagements that we might be able to pursue. And then we, based on that, we might have to take it for.
The shoulder.
The threshold of cost, if, you know, get an idea with this specific lighting share that we, you know, have this issue with. Just we may have to go through like a, an R Q process to say, or pursue. Like a lighting engineer, kind of do an evaluation of Brody or the shopping centers in that whole area. It was beyond a certain threshold and we need to go through the, the bid process or the, 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 the process, the process. In addition to that, I would like staff to start crafting a resolution for dark, dark skies certification that meets the legal standard. Um to provide an accession to the current status quo that we are no longer uh able to, you know, enforce or. In actual, for, for building materials, uh the, that point back as well. And then. I I think for this specific condition of nuisance lighting, we may need to. Um also look at what we have in our current code as far as thresholds so that we can inform residents, you know, who have special issues with. Energy use or neighbors, you know, that might have an avenue for them to have the city say, you know, this is based on our code. This is threshold, I mean, I think that's. Based on what powers that that's, we can also provide some option for specific services. These is letting us all. But that was the thing I, I heard and what I, you know, stand to break back for future consideration. I'd like to break back but the the lighting share, you know, development and the resolution at the same time so we can discuss this at one pro. And and I would just say too, so, you know, we're at that time again, we're starting talking about budget, you know, staff are putting together our grab operational budget. So the next meeting, you know, we'll have that presentation of the operational budget that won't include of course capital. That's for the mayor, the board, and what their goals are, what your goals and priorities will be for this school year twenty three, twenty four. So if it is looking into that project on Brody, that might be, we start planning for it and the budget, the budget process. So that, because, you know, that's when it really gets fresh, when it's in the budget, that's. Any further discussion? And customer, yeah, that I sure. Well, uh, we're at that remarkable time. Uh, pretty early. So. You're out.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll do my favor to say hi. Uh, all. We're adjourned at. We've got some time to. Bye, Barbara. Thank you.
Hi.
Good evening.
You too.